Thank you, Joy, as usual, and welcome, everybody, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman Work Session for September 24, 2024. First item is to call the roll. So Alderman Barnhill.
Here.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Caesar.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Berger.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Present.
Alderman Potts.
Present.
Alderman Baggett.
Present.
And the mayor's here. Everybody's here tonight. Next item is an opportunity for citizens to make comments for items that are not on the agenda. And I have one speaker tonight, and that's Dennis Burchier. And Mr. Burchier, if you will... Where's Mr. Burchier?
I don't care.
Come on up to the podium, and you have two minutes, sir.
509 Hermans Drive.
You'll speak a little bit louder, please, sir.
Right. My name is Dennis Burchier, and I live at 509 Hermans Drive, Franklin. I'm here about the noise at the Nashville Proton Center on Ecology Central on Corruthers Road. They do have existing plant pipes that have come out the side of their building that they call it chilling on their proton plant that they have. The noise is so loud, and it's a very high-pitched sound, that it comes out, and it just is constant 24 hours a day now. It's been going on for months, 24 hours a day. I went to Florida the other week, and at 5:00 in the morning, it was so loud, I heard it all the way down to 96 from the back of my house. It was that loud. All I'm asking is something to be looked into on this with the pipes coming out of that building, what we're breathing, what my grandchildren are breathing, what we're having to deal with there, and if it can be monitored, what can be done about it, or can they redirect this noise down, put a wall up? It's right next to the Sarah Cannon Center. And so if they can do something, but we have to listen to this 24 hours a day, high-pitched. And if you could imagine a high-pitched noise, and I've got three grandchildren, and they listen to it in the backyard. And so I'm just asking if there's anything that we can get back to our peaceful life of living in Franklin like it was before they started this, that I would like it? And if we can do something, I would appreciate it from every one of y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And somebody's going to grab you as you go out the back door to chat with you.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll go on to item number one, which is City of Franklin Contract Number 2024-0269, an agreement between the City of Franklin and the Cool Springs Conference Center designated the conference center as a subrecipient of American Rescue Plan Act grant funds. Christine, who you got with you?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to have with me... We have both of our controllers here today. We have Margaret Wilson and Mike Low, and we also have with us Matt Leahy. He is the general manager of the Marriott Cool Springs Conference Center, as well as Marriott Cool Springs Hotel, and he's the operator of the city's conference center. And we are here today to talk about an agreement between the City of Franklin and the Cool Springs Conference Center. Back in 2021, there was federal legislation that established the American Rescue Plan. There was an allocation of $9.2 million of federal grant money that came to the City of Franklin. It was a direct appropriation from the federal government. There was not a required match, the way most grants have a match requirement. Of course, it did come out with lots of rules for how those funds could be spent, and it took a couple of years for all of those federal rules to be released. And at that point, staff would go through the rules and also receive advisement on how those funds could be used. One of the proposals from staff was to use $1.2 million of the city's funds that were allocated in this program for improvements to the Cool Springs Conference Center. This is allowable by federal rules of the program. Certainly, the conference center's operations were impacted for three straight fiscal years by the pandemic shutdown. There is a reserve fund that the conference center uses for improvements. That is a set aside of operating revenues, and there were three years in which there were less revenues to the center than were projected as groups canceled or moved out of their meetings and their conferences that were planned during 2020, 2021, and even there were some cancellations in the early part of 2022. We are joint owners of the conference center, along with Williamson County, and they are also proposing to use $1.2 million of their own grant funds from this program to do improvements at the conference center. But this agreement is just the steps that would be necessary for the city to use its $1.2 million for the conference center. This is the same template agreement that you saw with Franklin Housing Authority. This board's already done $1 million of work with infrastructure improvements with Franklin Housing Authority, and the agreement spells out that we will follow the rules of the federal grant program. There will be auditing done as required by the federal government. They'll be spent by the end of calendar year 2026. Those are some of the provisions that are requirements of the program, and a subrecipient must agree to follow all of those rules. We did ask Matt to join us today because he will be the project manager for the project improvements at the conference center, and I would like for him to describe for you what that project will entail.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So the total project is combined 2.4 million. Really, there's three components. One of the components is an air wall replacement, which is the very large movable partitions that separate the main ballroom and the other two smaller adjoining ballrooms. That is already underway. We've got that scheduled to start as soon as November of this year, but it will drag on just because there's a lot of business that's going on at the conference center. So we have to do it in sections, unfortunately. The other part of that is there's a cooling tower replacement, which will help our heating and air conditioning. It will have some cost savings from electricity and from water, but it's also a vital piece of equipment to keep the conference center and the hotel air-conditioned. Do you want me to give the dollar amounts on those? So the air wall is $678,000. That's for materials and labor. And then the cooling tower is $82,492, and that is 30% of the total. The hotel portion, Chartwell Hospitality picks up the other 70% of that because it's just based on how the distribution of the air has worked out throughout the total building, since it's a shared piece of mechanical equipment. And then the renovation is a complete renovation of the conference center. We call it a soft goods, but really, that's what's in there. It's carpet, wall vinyl, artwork, furniture, some furniture, and soft seating in the common space, paint, some lighting, and a couple of improvements to our boardroom, a new boardroom table and chairs. And that total, we're estimating at about $1.6 million. So that's really the bulk of the 2.4 million is the conference center renovation. The other pieces go hand-in-hand with that renovation. If you don't have them, the renovation doesn't really matter. And those are the three main... The only items.
You have a question, Alderman Berger?
I was reading here that the agreement has to be in effect and fully executed. So all this has to be completed by the end of 2026? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That date is set by the U.S. Treasury. The only way that date can be changed or extended is by the federal government. That is a requirement of the grants, to spend all funds by the end of calendar year '26.
Currently, we are shooting for July 27 through August 27 of 2025, so it'll be ahead of that.
Oh, when I get it done by the end of 2025. I was wondering, how long do you think it might take?
Yeah, right. Currently, we have the space block to do it during that period of time.
So one other question. So every improvement that you're making, all the different items that you just read to us, those are improvements and items that can also be utilized in the future in case the Chartwell decides to expand the center. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean...
Expand the hotel?
The last renovation that we... Well, okay, let me take a step back here. The cooling tower and the air wall is, yes. We look at those as about a 25-year lifespan.
Okay.
The soft goods renovation usually is about a seven-year, and we're right at, what, nine now? But we had a slow period during COVID that it wasn't really used. So I mean, in a non-COVID time, it would have been about seven years.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So if most of this, then, you're doing renovations and everything, is it, since the county and the city own the conference center, and you all own the... Chartwell owns the hotel, this is sort of a joint effort to improve both areas?
Yes, and at the same time, we're going to be renovating the hotel as well.
Okay.
It'll be fun for me, but, you know.
All right.
Yeah, right around July, we'll start with our guestrooms, and the plan is that we do... It's a soft good renovation of our guestrooms as well, which is vinyl, carpet, window treatments, some furniture. It's not the case goods, not the built-in case goods. And then our lobby space, which will flow... That same design will flow with the conference center.
Does that include upgrading all the rooms? All the rooms there?
Yes.
And so this is all internal, nothing external? Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I understand.
Yeah, John San.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's not exterior. Yeah, thank you.
So you say yes or no?
It is only interior.
Only interior, okay. All right, thanks.
Alderman Caesar.
Appreciate the additional color. I'm curious what the downtime will be to accomplish some of the internal and how that will affect our pro forma in late year '25 or early '25 and '26.
Well, currently, we're looking at a 30-day period where there's no business. So that's... I think if we... I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think if we could go back to '15, we could probably see similar... Wasn't it '15?
It was '15.
Same exact timeframe and everything, so we could kind of go back and see what effect that has. It's going to certainly have a profound effect on the conference center and the hotel because the majority of our business is, you know, group.
But they did select that month purposely because July is typically one of the... From a financial reporting that we do here at the city on the center, July is one of the slowest months of the year.
July and August, yes.
They were purposeful in what they selected as the timeframe to pull that center offline.
It gives us an opportunity on the next fiscal budget to, you know...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
And Michael Sanders is here from Chartwell. So item two is Resolution 2024-68 to authorize employees of a participating political subdivision who are members of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System to establish retirement credit in TCRS for expanded armed conflict military service credit pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 834605.
I'm afraid you have to put up with me for the first few items today. It's heavy on finance, so thank you once again. I'm very pleased to have with me Sarah Silves, our HR Risk and Benefits Manager, with us tonight. And the next two items, HR and administration have worked on very closely, so I'm very glad to have her with me tonight. The next two items have come through our pension committee that met at the end of August. We did have informational presentations to the pension committee at previous meetings before we asked them to consider recommending action to the full board. So our pension committee members, our chair Alderman Barnhill, and also our mayor are very familiar with these next two items as the pension committee has been deliberating and giving staff advisement. This first item for this consideration of implementing this military service retirement credit, it applies to our defined benefit pension program with the state of Tennessee, Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. And these are employee... Full-time employees who have been hired by the city since January 1 of 2017. The employees hired before that time are part of a single employer pension. That was a City of Franklin, its own pension program. Beginning in 2017, we went to the state program. And as a little bit of background, the state of Tennessee's pension program has had military provisions for a very long time. So just background, this is not new for Tennessee's consolidated retirement system. In fact, when you go back and look at state statute, the first military provision within TCRS was for World War I. So this is not new. So as you think about that they're adding that the state statute was added six different conflicts at one time, just know that that is something that was more of a catch-up because the state statute started with World War I and moved with all the conflicts that you're familiar with until we get to this more modern period. So at one time, in the '22 legislative session, the state legislature added in six additional conflicts in which TCRS members would have an... If they're... Depending on where they fall in the different groupings of TCRS employers, because, of course, the state employees are in this program, higher education, you have school districts, so you have several different aspects of TCRS. We are what's called a political subdivision. And so these are the provisions and the rules for political subdivisions. So 2022 state statute allowed these additional six conflicts for veterans to be able to establish prior military service credit in TCRS. So what the law said is that this is actually an optional program for governments who... Political subdivisions who joined prior to 2022. So that's why we, as staff, came through the pension committee to get their advisement and then are coming to you now, because it's not a requirement for us to consider joining, but we wanted to bring that as a consideration. Now, but the state employees actually went ahead and had this eligibility. The state said all the state employees will have eligibility in these six programs, but you, as a political subdivisions who joined before 2022, you have an opportunity to decide if you want to join or not because there is a cost. And so there is a cost to the local government who chooses to join. There is also a cost to the employee who wishes to purchase prior service credit. And so that's why it's considered optional. So what we have... Something that's really good about it, though, I think good about this program, is it's not a requirement. It's a voluntary program. Should a local subdivision join, there is a cost for the employer, but if you have eligible employees who decide that they do not wish to purchase service credit, they do not have to do so. So it is voluntary on the employee side if the local government does get into this program. And you also, just to make... It's a good point, too. This is only for employees who are vested in the program, and you also cannot buy military credit to become vested. So an employee would have to serve a minimum of five years of employment within TCRS to be able to buy military service credit. The HR department helped coordinate the process to work with TCRS to determine what the buy-in cost for the City of Franklin would be. And we chose the method of... We conducted a survey of all of our employees who are TCRS members to see who would be interested. It was a survey of interest to see who would be interested in this program. Even if you expressed interest, knowing that there's a cost, you still don't have to do that. But it gave TCRS names and potential service credits that they wished to purchase to be able to do an actuarial study to determine what the employer would pay. And so TCRS came back and gave us three payment options for the City of Franklin. They gave us an upfront payment option of paying just under $200,000 as a city. Or we could spread that over a 12-month period, or we could have an option of spreading payments over a 10-year period. And there is, you know, an interest cost, of course, built into that. But staff does recommend... We discussed with the pension committee a recommendation to... And the resolution was prepared by the attorneys for TCRS and reviewed by our law department that by Resolution 2024-68, we would choose paying upfront in fiscal year 2025 a payment of $197,006, should the board approve to enter into the program. So we wanted to walk through, should the board decide you'd like to get into this program, what would be the next steps for employees who perhaps would be interested? So one of the good things, I believe, about TCRS is the customer service to employees. There is a website with lots of information. Also, it has the application for this program on the website. It has materials. All of our employees who are in TCRS have an individual account online that they can look at. But there's also a phone assistance line that's open from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Central Time during the week, and employees can call that line and get information about their accounts. They can get information about this program if the city decides to opt into the program. There are payment options available for employees buying service credits. There is payment plans over a period of time that can be worked out. They also can roll over funds from other retirement accounts. An employee may decide that they would like to roll something from a prior employer to add to their service credits in TCRS. And all of those funds would go directly to TCRS to add to the subaccount at TCRS. It would not have to come through the city's general ledger. And so certainly, as I just have stated before, it is a voluntary program for the employees. An employee who, even an eligible employee, would not be required to participate in the program. And then certainly, if... Just as a timeline, the pension committee did unanimously recommend consideration for approval to the full board back at the end of August, and we're here on September 24, and we would ask for the board's consideration on October 8.
Vice Mayor's got a question.
So the cost is based on estimated use, or does that true up, based on actual enrollment by employees?
What it...
The city's cost?
It was... It is based on the survey of interest. So certainly, those were people who were employed here at that time. If for some reason, you know, some of them may not enroll, but we will hire veterans in the future who will be interested in this program. In fact, it may help veterans who are trying to decide if they'd like to go into public service because they can buy up to four years of credit. So, you know, we don't know who we're going to hire down the road, but that money will go into the City of Franklin's subaccount, you know, within TCRS, and will just help the asset... We have over $7 million of assets as of the last actuarial study with TCRS. So it will be credited to the City of Franklin's subaccount. But I expect we'll have more veterans down the road that aren't with us yet, who may choose to purchase up to four years of service credit. And certainly, every year, we... An actuarial study is performed by TCRS, and we receive a new funding... Employer funding percentage, and if we... It'll all go into that mix of how much... You know, one of the good things for us about considering to join now is we are relatively new in the program. So when you think about a government who has been at TCRS 30 or 40 years, and they have employees maybe who are closer to retirement, you don't have as much time to build up, you know, funds to meet their requirement needs when they retire. But we have... Most of our employees, they definitely, with the City of Franklin, we've been in almost eight years, so we have employees that have more years to serve, who it gives you more time to be able to put money aside for their retirement needs.
And if nobody ever applied for it, the $197,000 continues to build up in the pension plan to what our donations are. Can we go on to the next one, which is 2024-69? Go ahead, please.
Can I ask, what would be the cons for the city not to participate?
Not being able to hire veterans who have experience that they could bring to the City of Franklin because that was important?
Who would want to be in that program?
And over time, more governments will join this program because, like I said, the governments who would like to join that have been in TCRS a long time, their buy-in is higher than ours. They will figure out eventually how to fund that buy-in. It may take them a while, but there are governments who... They're not in today, but they will be when they're able to fund that buy-in because they want to recruit and retain veterans.
I think that would be...
All right, Alderman Potts.
Thank you.
Christine, just two quick questions. I know that you made the recommendation, or the committee had made the recommendation, to go with the first option of the upfront, $197,006. What type of cost savings compared to the other two options was there?
There's not much difference between the spreading out over 12 months, just because it's not that much of a time difference. The spreading out over 10 years, it was maybe an extra $15,000 when I did the... I mean, I didn't do a net present value calculation, but it wasn't significant, and it seemed... As we, as staff, we talked with the city administrator and our budget manager, it just looked like we could go ahead and incorporate that into this current fiscal year and not have to spread it out over a period of time. We appreciate TCRS giving the option because that could have helped some, especially governments with very large buy-ins. It might help it make it more feasible, but we just think we could go ahead and incorporate that in one year.
Excellent. And then the last question is, on Slide 1, where you were looking at the following armed conflicts that were included, will they come back on a scheduled basis to add any future armed conflicts? How does that work?
It will go through the legislature. In Tennessee, changes to the TCRS statute will go through the legislative process. So they did have to do a significant catch-up, but if a state representative or senator brings that, you know, they don't have to wait and do a big catch-up, but this time, that's what happened. But it does go... This is part of TCA. It's not a staff-level decision.
We need to keep moving on. We've got a lot of things to cover. So if we can go to the next item, which is the 2024-69 Secure Act of 2022.
This recommendation from the pension committee is in regards to the city's defined contribution pension or retirement plan for 457s, and of course, our 401As are defined contribution. This is also related to... This is related to a federal law that was signed at the end of 2022, and there are numerous provisions to the Secure 2.0 Act that do not apply to government plans, but there are aspects that do. And so this is implementing aspects that are required of governmental plans. And we spent more time with the pension committee. I will not read these to you, but there are several aspects that do apply to governmental plans. The one that I will mention is this is adding a Roth provision to the city's 457 plan. We currently do not have a Roth provision to that specific plan. We do have Roth IRAs, but we do need to add a Roth provision to the 457 in order to be in compliance with Secure 2.0. And there are some aspects that would be beneficial to employees in certain situations, so I will share that. This also came from our... With the unanimous recommendation from the pension committee, and we asked for consideration by the full board.
Questions? Okay. Good job. Okay, next is a discussion concerning a request for a right turn... Okay, next is a discussion concerning a request for a right-turn-only eastbound on South Margin at Third Avenue South.
Thank you, Christine.
All right, we got a short little presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Adam to walk you through the presentation. And then at the end, we have some pros and cons. And we look forward to getting your feedback on how you want to proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. So in 2022, DNA came to us, Downtown Neighborhood Association, about concerns about South Margin Avenue, as well as a few other locations. This is their primary concern, basically from Lewisburg to Third Avenue and those intersections, particular intersections in between those two points, which is fourth, really. They did their own study and found that, they went out there and counted cars. I think some of them are here, that found that over 90% were turning right. And we verified that in 2023 with our own count. It's up to about 92%, 93%. And their request was, so one of the, the main issue is that you get a queue, and you guys have probably driven South Margin. You get a queue with one guy that wants to go, or girl, or whatever goes straight or left. And you got all these cars that want to turn right, and then they get blocked. So that creates a queue. It also creates an occlusion safety issue at Fourth Avenue South. They can't see because the cars are queued up, especially large vehicles. And that does cause accidents, angled accidents. So every once in a while, they get an accident there. So what we're trying to do is keep that traffic flowing, keep the queue down. It's not going to solve the problem 100%, but it will probably help. We think it will help quite a bit to keep that queue down. We did pass this to T.DOT. And I actually sent it to the MUTCD Committee, the federal committee. And they agreed that the signalhead modifications were acceptable for that movement. So here's what the signalhead modifications would look like that were approved by the federal MUTCD Committee. And T.DOT, they're basically showing the right-turn-only movement with the only sign. That's the approved sign that they required me to use. With this, the crosswalk would have to be removed on the south side of the intersection. So to cross Third, you'd have to go up and then across instead of at that location. It seems like it would be a problem, but it's really not that big of a deal to just cross over and above. The other issue is that Streets Department, there's a ped pole on the side that you can't see, towards me, that keeps getting hit. Those pet heads keep getting hit from trucks. And so if we did remove that, that would help them from maintaining that post about every two to three months it gets hit, so. Yeah, I kind of graded out, says crosswalk to be removed. You have to go up to the north side and then across. See the crosswalk on the left side of the screen? That would still be there. Yeah. Because that crosswalk would be in conflict with the right-turn-only movement. So otherwise, we'd have to have an exclusive pedestrian phase, and that would delay it even worse. So we didn't think that would be, based on counts for pedestrians, that it shouldn't be that big of a deal. Yeah, good, good. Well, a little bit extra, I think. So as part of this, we'd have to put some pavement markings on the ground, some right-turn-only arrows. At Fourth, we'd have to put a sign that alerts them, again, you know, right-turn-only, so that hopefully they could see the arrows, they could see the signs before they get there. At Fourth and at Lewisburg, we would put, and that, we're going to think about this a little bit, not a through street because you can't go through, right? You have to go down and to the right. So we might modify these signs a little bit, but we would want to put some kind of warning at Lewisburg as well. And this, we did a, with the downtown signoring timing we finished earlier this year, we did have the consultant look at modeling that as a right-turn-only. And as you can see, it does improve the level of service for that eastbound approach from C to A and the delay there. We did think that the delay, the model was showing a little bit better than what probably occurs out there with only 23 seconds of delay. So we did think that was probably a little bit worse, but-
So you think that on the eastbound South Margin, because I would agree, 22.9 seconds. Now, I don't know, there's certain times a day it's worse.
And it averages out the right turners, too.
Yeah. And so you're saying that might be even worse than a C, possibly?
Could be. It feels like it, you know, when you're traveling, it's more than 23 seconds.
It does feel like that.
But that's what the model spoke that.
So just to kind of touch on pros and cons, there's certainly some good things, and I'm going to say concerns about doing it as well. So obviously, the model showed the improved level of service. And it's going to help reduce those queues that are backing up into the intersections. And Adam stated before, we see it often, one right turner, or one through movement or left movement can really back it all the way up through Lewisburg during those peak hours. So that would, it would help prevent that. Some cons is, it's essentially, there's no physical barrier to force you to go right. So then police have to be out there to enforce this, to really emphasize it. I do think there'll be a little bit of driver confusion initially. People are just used to what they're doing, and change is sometimes hard. But I do think they would adjust over time. But it, you know, it does cause a little bit of driver confusion for those out-of-towners that approach a four-way intersection such as that. It could potentially, and I'm going to stress potentially, it could promote more cut-through traffic through the downtown because it's not as queued up or as backed up. Again, people know it's a, kind of like a bypass where you can go down the street and make a quick right. So you could see more traffic starting to cut through, and you could see speeds potentially increase. And again, I'm stressing potentially. This is one of those things that you're not going to really know until we do it. And I don't, I wouldn't expect the first two weeks to be pretty. I would want to look at week three, four, and five and see how people are reacting and adjusting to it. And with that said, we're happy to answer any questions. And I do know from a public standpoint, we didn't, we staff did not do a lot of public outreach, but they did work with the Downtown Neighborhood Association and the Business Association. And they did give us letters of support to try to pursue this option. So I'll open it up to questions.
If I, I do have two speakers, if I could go ahead and do them first. And I have Bob Martin and Margaret Martin. Ms. Martin, it hurts me to tell you that you can only speak for two minutes. So please come forward, and we'll get your comments and-
Well, can you hear me? I could not hear you. This is non, is it, is it on? I could not hear you.
Sorry.
But I think I know what you said. I could read. Fourth Avenue South is a parking lot right now. Everybody from, that works downtown tries to park on Fourth Avenue South. The line of sight through those driveways, from those driveways is terrible. There is a little space that you can get your car in and out. But it is, with any more traffic, flying down Fourth Avenue South is going to be a problem. Now, I know you all have been working on this for two years. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to contradict my neighbors who want this. It's fine, you do whatever you want to, but don't expect it to work perfectly because it isn't. Also, the, I cannot get out of the dead end at Fourth Avenue, neither can anybody else, as long as there are any cars there. And it's the cars that are coming up, up Margin cannot see, they cannot see anybody in the dead end. So it's, it's a mess. And you all have worked through all of this, I know you have. But people are still going to, they're going to race up South Margin. And just remember that Fourth Avenue is a parking lot now, and you're adding some more traffic. I don't think there's going to be much, it's not going to affect us at all. Because I never, I never turn left on Third anyway, even though I live there. I go all the way around the block to come in my driveway. But I just, I just don't want you to think that this is going to solve it because it isn't. Thank you for all your work. Walton, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Martin, 238 Third Avenue South. I'm opposed to the changes. Thank you.
Okay, board. Alderman Vaggott.
Thank you. This was brought to me, and we've been working on a number of things. I want to say like, after the second month after I was elected, we had our first meeting on some of these streets. And I appreciate staff and engineering really looking into this deeply. Because I know that you have put in a ton of effort on this, which is not, doesn't probably always, you know, sit at the top of your list of the most important. But it is important to the downtown neighbors, and so I appreciate that. This was, we did ask that the individuals, and they're here, Bob Ravner and Walter Green, asked that they went to the Downtown Neighborhood Association and get that board to review these changes. Because while there's no HOA in downtown, they do have a neighborhood association. And so that was something I asked of them. And we sent to the Downtown Franklin Association at staff's request and got, and this was emailed out to those members as well. I feel like I have, I almost feel like I have to support Margaret Martin and my grandma, you know, I feel like she's my grandmother, you know? She's just so sweet. But I do think that the, you know, the thing that resonates with me is that there's not much else we can do at this intersection. And I think that's what we kind of came to with staff was, this intersection is a bottleneck for so much. And there's just no room to do anything else. This luckily is not a capital-intensive change with permanence. And we never want to enter into something thinking that we're going to not do it down the line. Because we would hope that we would be making a decision that would be, you know, we expect it to work. However, it isn't a permanent capital improvement to the road that couldn't be reversed if there was significant issues that did come. But I think the positive outweighs the negative, in my opinion. There are some unintended consequences. But I've seen a lot of wrecks on that Fourth and Margin. I've seen, there's going to be a lot more stuff that comes up on the corner with the Moore, Franklin Grove. That is one of the worst roads in town. And if there's any way to possibly improve it, I think we should think about that. But I am, I do want us to make sure that if this is made, that Fourth Avenue and the parking spaces and the gaps between the driveways, that we do go, and I was just looking through here on the Google map, there are, there are some very tight driveways. And making sure that there is enough line of sight, maybe it might sacrifice one or two parking spots on that street. But to make sure that we have the line of sight on Fourth Avenue, because that is a big concern of mine as well. That's all.
Alderman Plant. Then I'll get Alderman Potts.
I'm not sure how I feel about this realistically, because I do both take a right there often, but I've also gone across many times. I think anytime you change a traffic pattern in downtown, it gets to be, I used to have an office on the corner of Second and Bridge. And when we put those stop signs in there, it was like sitting on the front porch waiting to see the collision because people were still racing through. As I look at this, and I understand your concern about the dead end getting out, but also people trying to leave Fourth to get on Margin. Is there any value in making that a four-way stop so that the people on the dead end can get out, you're slowing down the traffic, and you're also giving the people that are going down Margin towards Third, the opportunity to stop and see, oh, you can't go, you can't go straight through anymore. I need to turn left now. To me, a four-way stop at that intersection is not out of character for what we already celebrated every other stop around that 16-block area. Is that out of the question to maybe help safety?
It doesn't meet the federal warrants for always stop.
Okay. Because it makes too much sense, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we did look at that. It wouldn't mean it. We also had a little bit of concern about pushing the queue into Lewisburg, like for that stop sign, as well as how much traffic we allow to turn onto South Margin from Third Avenue. So the signal, the left turn signal to turn, we'd be pushing a lot, and then they'd be stopping. And I don't want to, we wouldn't want to back it out into Third. So we did look at a little bit of that. Overall, though, not meeting the warrants for an always stop was kind of the recommendation not to do that.
Alderman Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree with what my colleagues had said just a moment ago. I think that this is something that could be improved. And I think Alderman Vaggott actually makes a good point that if this does not make the desired improvements, you know, we have an opportunity to actually make future change. We're not locked in stone here. My request is, and I didn't see this verbally, you know, presented in the presentation, is increase public education regarding this change and the utilization of the trailer signs to be put out for an extended period of time, both before and then after it's been implemented. And then also use in our City of Franklin webpages to do that. And having hot links right there, right when you land on it, to drive people to do that. And then also using social media and the Herald as well. Because this will be a significant change. And I think that we're going to have to notify people in a variety of ways.
Yes, we would do that, for sure. Absolutely.
Vice Mayor.
A comment and a question. On the question, I had a similar comment to your, or question to your bullet top, or next one up from the last, on what the implications are to traffic down Fourth and how do you redirect? But we're talking about less than 10% of cars, it sounds like, going through that intersection. I will tell you, I've been the guy blocking everybody behind me going straight now that I'm on the other end of downtown. And, but no one ever follows me that direction. So I definitely don't see the volume going straight or turning left there. But it does happen. So I'd be curious to, where do those cars end up going over time? But my biggest thing is just a comment, which is, I can't imagine even getting my head around this until we are done with Lewisburg. The disaster that has been, the Five Points mess so far, that I've been feeling pretty deeply, it, we got to get moving down Lewisburg. So I don't know what the timing is on implementing this, but I can't imagine us continuing to move down Lewisburg with that project in the middle of also doing this change. That just feels like a disaster waiting to happen.
We would totally wait for them to be out of the way, for sure.
Alderman Burgers, you want to say something?
Well-
You don't have to.
I know. I had a thought in the left of my mind, but I think it's back. We were talking about, you know, Jason, you were talking about education and everything, and that's great. I'm not against that. It's great to educate the residents and everything, but you know how many people go through that intersection and don't live here? They will never see the education, will never understand any of that. So, and just think about all the stuff that goes on downtown, and the shoppers that come here and the people that don't live here, so.
Yeah.
Good luck.
We did, we did learn something really nice today, that we can edit Google Maps and Waze. We do, now we have the ability to make the request to Google to change that. So that anything that would route, would not route straight or left through that intersection. So I mean, at least we have that.
I think somebody from the Downtown Neighborhood Association wanted to speak. So I'd recognize Mr. Ravner for two minutes.
Thank you. Bob Ravner, Downtown Franklin. So we've been working on this for two years. What we, here's what we know. We know that our downtown neighbors are frustrated with traffic congestion. We know that the traffic continues to increase. I was just on Lewisburg this morning heading to Eastern Flank, and it was all backed up at Lewisburg because all the cars were backed up on South Margin heading north. You couldn't move at Lewisburg. We think that this solution actually pushes traffic through South Margin and keeps it flowing. I've personally witnessed two accidents in the last month at Fourth Avenue. It is one of the highest incidence of accidents in the city. I don't, and I hate to disagree with my esteemed neighbor and friend, Margaret Martin, I don't see Fourth Avenue being any part of this issue. If- If people are going to move, they're going to move, go down Church, which is what I do to get to my home on Third Avenue. We know that it is a tremendous problem. There are 65 homes on that Fourth Avenue dead end side and it is treacherous to get out of there. There have been cars flipped over because cars coming from Third to Lewisburg speed up on their way there. So it's an enormous problem and we've worked closely with the city. We think doing nothing is not the solution here and we need to try something. And we think this is the least, least cost and least impactful way that can have the maximum difference. What may happen, we don't know until we try something, but we don't think doing nothing is the right answer here. And, and we've been working on it for two years and we think, we think when you're offered a 90-10 solution to do something, we ought to try it.
I'd like to make a comment if I could because I live downtown and I've experienced all of this and the issue that I see is actually at Church Street. The traffic backs up, you know, the signal timing is, I'm sorry to insult, but terrible at Margin and Third Avenue and the traffic backs up in the afternoon and it's very, very difficult to turn on Church Street onto Third. You may wait, you know, have several cycles of the signal. I think y'all taught us at one time that whenever you change traffic signals and traffic patterns that it's like a balloon. You put pressure here and it goes somewhere else. And so I don't think we have enough information about what really happens to that something else whenever you get everybody turning right. And, and I agree with Vice Mayor that, you know, the intersection at Lewisburg is such a challenge and I think that's got to be solved first. But anyway, you're the board. So who else wanted to speak? Alderman Caesar and?
I'll be rather compact with my thoughts. I think as others have said, there's very little risk to do this and then to pull it back in the future. We're not putting a concrete barrier in the ground. We're not dramatically shifting the way that people's behaviors can be changed, can be changed in the future. My concern on waiting until Lewisburg is repaired is that it will further exacerbate.
No, the intersection.
Yeah, the intersection.
Not repair Lewisburg.
The intersection at Lewisburg and South Margin?
Do something to that intersection.
First.
Yes.
I think if we wait until we address the intersection at Lewisburg and South Margin to address Third and South Margin, the problem compounds itself before it gets better. And perhaps, perhaps, because we'll have more flow theoretically through that intersection at that point, which would even stack the South Margin traffic more substantially. At least that's, that's what my concept would be. I, I'm, I think the risk to us is if we wait too long, the problem doesn't get better. More car, more accidents happen at Fourth Avenue South and, and I don't see traffic becoming lesser there in the future, even if the intersection at Lewisburg and South Margin is improved. I actually see it becoming more substantial.
Alderman Barnhill.
I think we've covered just about everything we can cover, but I can, I will agree. That is a terrible South Margin. If you're turning to go to Third Avenue from Fifth, it'll back up past, out into Lewisburg Highway. And, and there's no, and all you've got is just one person that wants to go straight or turn left. That's been a black it up. So I think this is a good thing to try myself. And I don't see that if we're waiting on the repair or whatever we're planning on doing at Lewisburg and Margin, I'm not sure that, I, what's the timeframe on that? Now, and it's not to study it. I mean, we're talking about.
The signal's under design right now for Lewisburg and South Margin.
Okay.
You all approved that. The funding for construction of the signal at Lewisburg and South Margin is not funded, I don't believe.
We put $200,000 into the state of the intersection, did we not?
Yeah. Get the design complete. Then we'll probably have about a year of right-of-way acquisition and then another year of construction. If that funding gets put in place.
So we got two years at least on that.
You have at least two years.
I would not, I would not hold up on this project waiting on that one for the completion. But that's, that's just mine. But the biggest thing I see, anytime you turn off a Fifth or Margin, going to Second, Fourth or Third, you got a problem.
Because I do want to make sure that everyone understands that 90% of the people turn right. How I could, you could probably tell me how many cars.
Actually, 92%.
92%. Walter said 90%. Thank you. I wanted to point out Walter Green for doing that hand count. I saw him out there.
92.
92. But I would tell you that the alternative, this is the thing, the, here's where we're at. We've looked at this every which way. The alternative is doing nothing. That really is the option. So it's, and the intersection at Lewisburg and Margin, it's just going to delay the people that are going to come and do the same thing they're already doing, which will not, not make the queue shorter here. It'll make a queue longer on Lewisburg. We got to get the people flowing. And, and I will tell you that 10% of those cars that might turn left on the Fourth, most of them, if they're smart, will keep going down Lewisburg to get to the square and get downtown. They're not going to even try. They wouldn't do it now. And so it's a very small number of people. And the downtown residents want to see something done. And I think doing nothing and waiting two or three years is just showing that we really can't be decisive about trying something to fix one of the biggest problems in our traffic downtown. You ask anybody in this town what the worst intersection, what worse street is in this town, it's this one right here and we got something that goes from a C to an A. So I want everybody to know that if we don't move forward this, we're, we're okay with a C level of service when we have an A right in front of us.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to City of Franklin Contract Amendment One, Contract Number 2023-0399 with Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation for Preservation Grant for Toussaint Lovett Tour Cemetery. Any questions about that one? Item number six, since Ms. Clayton is already up here, is possible city naming policy.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Blake is with me this evening and going to pull up the quick presentation. As we go through this, just quickly and to get to the questions at the end, this is more of, we've got several opportunities that we'd like to bring before the Board of Mayor and Alderman to consider for future parks or space or structures. But we would like for you to think comprehensively regarding other properties we may have or structures throughout the city. So this gives that opportunity just to receive some feedback so that we can work on a draft plan for you and then bring you back something overall citywide to consider regarding naming rights. So Blake?
Thank you, Lisa. So just to give you all a little bit of background, the reason this came up is Lisa and I started together to draft the ordinance. And so upon my drafting of the ordinance, some of these questions started to present themselves and it became apparent that, that we were going to need to establish a uniform policy without, throughout the city. Just as a little bit of a reminder, right now, if an asset of the city is to be named, it would just go before you all as a resolution. And you, there's no real parameters. We don't have any sort of uniform rules that we, that we follow as far as naming. So I'm going to run through, there's only four questions overarching. I'd like to just run through them, all four, and we can, and then I'd like to give you all the opportunity just to kind of take it from there, give Lisa and I some feedback so that if you all want to move forward with a policy for naming, that kind of gives me some, some writing points, if you will. So number, first question, should the naming policy be limited only to assets of the Parks Department? So just to parks itself? So if not, should?
Why don't you just stop right there?
Okay.
Does anybody want to limit it just to parks?
No.
Okay. Now, I will say that the Streets Department has specifically asked not to be included. We've talked to them and the reason for that being that it's the addressing manual is the way it's done now. And so Streets and subdivisions would not be included in this.
Excuse me. That usually comes through our building of his services, so that's who tailors those names.
But you have the honorary names that you add to the.
Correct.
But does, does that not give?
And so, so we have the resolution that allows for honorary naming.
So you don't need it.
Right. So we did, and, and the difference would be that's honorary.
So it's separate.
It would be separate.
Okay.
You know, like the, the one on Fourth is specifically, it's above, you know, the actual Fourth Avenue. So. Exactly. So number two, should the naming policy be open to the naming of buildings not within city parks? And so that would be like City Hall, Public Works.
I don't know about City Hall.
Okay.
City Hall, but wouldn't it include like conference rooms within the city?
We're going to get there. Mm-hmm. That's another one of my questions. So it goes, yeah.
So when you say City Hall, define that.
So for this question, it would be for the building itself, like.
For the entire City Hall.
I would like to exclude the possibility of naming City Hall after an individual.
Specifically City Hall.
Specifically City Hall.
I have a question because we can go a thousand different ways here. Will we be, once the policy is in place, will the policy be written in such a way that every building is eligible to be named or will the board at that time have the ability or the authority to choose if a building like City Hall can be named or not?
I can write it however you all would like.
I think what I would write, I would like it to be written in a way that allowed the board to make a decision on whether or not a building is eligible to be named rather than at this point saying these three can't, these two can. When the naming opportunity comes before us, I think that potentially would influence my decisions going forward.
Except, except if you did want to eliminate City Hall by itself because it is, it is the major building, like you brought up. I want to make sure that it didn't affect any other buildings or when you say City Hall, it's City Hall. But does it affect conference rooms within, within internal? Yeah, so you're getting there, but I agree with what you said, but I would still eliminate City Hall.
Okay. If the policy is open to naming, the naming of city-owned, city-owned buildings, is it also open to individual rooms or assets within the buildings?
Yes.
For example, the boardroom or conference rooms.
Definitely.
Different things within the buildings.
Yes.
Okay.
It would be unwise to exclude that.
Well, I want to say if the policy is closed to the naming of city-owned buildings, if it's closed, you could still name a room or something within the building. Could you not?
Yes. But what I've heard from some of the others, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that City Hall itself would not, you would not want to name that after anyone. But other buildings, like for example, a Public Works building or a building on a park property would be open to naming.
Okay.
And then final question, would the board like a subcommittee to consider these items or would you prefer them to go before you all as an application?
I think we need another committee.
Such a brilliant idea, Alderman Barnhill.
However, sub it is, I think we need another committee.
I got one point of order. Usually when you bring things like this to us, there's something waiting in the side, on the sidelines to come to us and we don't have a policy to do it. And so we're doing this so that we can do it. I think that this is such a big change that we, we also need some, I feel like we need to discuss apart from any scenarios, like what justifies, as this board is the policy, the, when something should be named after someone? And I think criteria.
Got to be dead.
Do they?
According, according to our Streets naming policy, they have to.
Again, you could have differing opinions and all these things. And two, I think that just helps us from having, you know, us to have to say no to things. When we, when we set a bar, I think that's important because or else, you know, you get someone that has a good day and wants to honor someone and then it puts us on the, on the spot to say no to something when we don't have any established criteria of what it means to be, have something named after you in the City of Franklin. I think it's very important, not just for specific situations that may or may not come before us, but just in general. It would be unwise for us not to have come up with that and talked about that absent of a specific situation. And I think that's fair to all of us.
Alderman Peterson and then Alderman Berger.
I would like the final decision on any naming to be to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, though. The final decision on whether it's to be named. Yeah, so in other words, if you have a committee, they do all this work and they bring it to the board, then our vote is what she's saying.
Our, our vote.
Yeah, they recommend it.
You're on.
Yeah, so, okay, there was another thought. I'm having a hard time. I've had a headache all day and I can't remember half these things. So if you are, Patrick, what you said about bringing, did you want to iron all this out before a subcommittee would be formed or before we would have? Or do you want Blake to do that? Or are you saying that we should iron out some of these things? I wanted you to clarify that.
Before we commence with putting people's names all over city things, or not that we're going to, it's going to happen all the time, but I do think it's wise for the policy to lay out what, some general criteria for what establishes the, like, what, so that we're at least have a rubric to work from. It doesn't, it's not going to be a scoring sheet of anything, but I think we need to say what, talk about what's important, what, what, what makes it, you know, somewhat important enough to have something named after.
Right, I understood that, but who, who is bringing those things to the policy? Are you saying all of us?
I think it would be great if you brought us some idea starters.
Would it be helpful to have an inventory of things that are already named and why they were named that?
Yeah.
Like if you look at the archives, it's named after Louise Lynch because she ran it forever. Or if you look at the soccer ring, it's because, you know, I think maybe that would help establish some of your criteria.
Some of it.
Why did we name? I know the story about Matt Hatcher. I don't know if y'all do. Why was that named Matt Hatcher? Those are streets, but I think if we did a short, maybe within the City of Franklin, things that are named, which are typically county buildings, what was the story that got them that name?
And does the county have a policy? I don't know. Anyway, maybe there's other cities have good, good policy provisions that we could mirror. I just think that keeps us from backing us into a corner when someone wants to name something and we're like, well, is that deserving? Or maybe there's a new board that comes in.
And can LEG's Dream World still be the name, please?
And I think that Alderman Barnhill suggested the committee, so I think we found the chair right here as well.
Well stated, Alderman Potts.
Second.
Okay.
It'll be a short meeting.
Okay, we're looking at a certificate of compliance for retail liquor license for St. Goose. Any question on that one? Okay, we'll now go to presentation and discussion of annexation capabilities and growth potential by Drayson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Before I turn it over to Emily and Eric, I just want to give you a bit of information that our team has talked about, to trying to continually provide you with information about how we're managing growth in our city for the purpose of how we make strategic investments and return on those investments. And this study, some of you have seen, but not all of you, that we've had for a number of years regarding our annexation capes, capabilities and growth potential, looking at each of the basins. And our team updated that, that, this study and work that we've done internally. And Eric is going to go through it again and we've added to it. But again, I want to emphasize that the purpose of this is to help you understand where our potential and capabilities are in growing the committee to assist with making investments and guiding investment in our community. Eric?
Thank you very much. So as stated, this is an update to an existing capabilities and growth study that was completed previously in 2018 and was updated as part of the five-year update to. previously in 2018, and was updated as part of the five-year update to Envision Franklin, and will be included in, or is included in the new Envision Franklin as an appendix. So if you want to read this in its entirety, you can see new Envision Franklin. But I will give you just a quick run-through of the different drainage basins and what staff has determined them to be as far as their annexation growth potential, and the general timeframes for that through this. And what's been passed along to you is just a synopsis slide that is at the end of my presentation, but if you want to follow along with that, you're welcome to as well. I'm gonna focus on the short and midterm basins here tonight, since we're running pretty low on time. But if you, again, want to take a look at any of those long-term basins, you're welcome to do so in the appendices of Envision Franklin. So first, we just have an update to the suitability analysis that is provided in Envision Franklin. This was done by our consultants through that project. Obviously, the dark green being the most suitable for growth, and red currently being the least suitable, based predominantly on just the availability of infrastructure and, and the costs associated with developing those areas of the urban growth boundary. As well as just the design concepts for a refresher of what our current design concepts are at the stage that this was put together. So our current annexation laws, property owners are, in order for it to be annexed into the city of Franklin, it is by property owner request, unless it's by a referendum, in which case a group of property owners would do it. So even if you vote no on the referendum, if it's majority, then you could potentially be annexed in with a group vote. Non-continuous annexation is allowed, and we assumed that the state would approve the new county growth plan update. So this last point technically isn't correct right now, but once that growth plan update is approved by the state, referendums will no longer be allowed outside of our UGB. That says UGB. UGB, and that's through just an interlocal agreement that we will be a part of once all of that gets approved. Franklin Growth, Franklin grew from two square miles in the 1960s to over 44 square miles by 2022. Just so you can see, just a general, uh, growth report. Population has increased approximately 21,000 per decade since 1990, and our 2023 population estimate was just over 90,000, with just under 39,000 dwelling units. Now, based on this past growth, we are currently projecting our population to be over 100,000 by 2030. And this projection is based on the past population growth rates by decade, as well as just the overall household size and the absorption into the Franklin market, what our current construction rates typically are. So this is just based on the trends that we've been seeing. We are expecting just over 105,000 by 2030, and over 126 by 2040. This is taken straight out of our development report, but just as a refresher, our future build-out, if everything that was approved already were to be built tomorrow, this is what the breakdown of the different housing types would be within the city limits. So we're looking at approximately 46% of all total housing being single-family, followed by 30% with apartment units, and 13% being townhomes and condos, with the remaining rest of the units being pretty small in comparison. So to really lead us into this potential annexation capability study, so staff studied each of the drainage basins along the edges of the UGB and just throughout the UGB, looked at the developable acreage, what the future land uses would be, the ability to serve each of these drainage basins with sewer, road, fire services, water, and looked at the magnitude of investment that would be needed in order to serve these basins adequately. We assigned them then short, mid, or long-term capability classifications, with short being from zero to nine years for reasonable build-out, mid 10 to 19, and long being 20-plus. Now, we've used the best ability, best available data that we have, but obviously with something this in-depth, you know, it may need additional analysis if there are some questions that just can't be answered with this high-level analysis. So it coincided with the analysis of the drainage basins with their ability to serve, and this is what we use to make our recommendation for the UGB update that we went through over the past couple of years. Now, caveat, all of these basins have needed improvements regardless of whether they are short, mid, or long-term classification, and these classification factors do include that total developable acreage, the future land use of the area, whether it's inside the city or out, the ability to provide services to those basins, and the overall magnitude of investment that would be needed. So just a reminder of what the drainage basin system looks like and what staff has proposed as the 2024 Franklin UGB. There in blue is all areas that is outside of the city but within the urban growth boundary, and then you can see the drainage basins delineated by these thick black lines. So starting off with the short-term capability basins, we will start off with Goose Creek. The total area that is within the UGB but outside of the city in this area, again, this takes into effect with the county growth plan update, assuming that gets approved the way that we have recommended. That's where these numbers are coming from for this specific area, because this is the only basin that we're really adding acreage into. So the total area within the urban growth boundary, 5277, with the area that we've deemed developable as about 2,400 acres, which is about 45% of that area. So the future land uses throughout this is predominantly residential of varying types and sizes, as well as a significant amount of land conservation, because there is a lot of hillside protection in the southeastern portion of the basin. And there are some existing county subdivisions on the northern and western sides of the basin. So this area is available to be served with gravity sewer, but expansion will be needed in the southeast, and significant development in this basin will definitely directly lead to a need for the south plant. As far as road infrastructure is concerned, the proximity to I-65 does allow for potential development density, but there are a lot of projects in here that are slated and need to be completed. So the Carruthers Extension with any sort of development pass along lane will need to be served. The Goose Creek Bypass Extension continuing to the east to meet up with that Carruthers Extension, the Long Lane Overpass over I-65. Peytonsville Extensions are in the near and midterm for certain sections of Peytonsville Road. There are improvements slated for Pratt Lane, and then the Lewisburg Pike improvements are long-term because they are up to the state. But obviously, even in our short-term capable basins, there are a lot of road infrastructure projects. As far as emergency response is concerned, we do have the new Fire Station 7, so that would be able to serve the vast majority of the southern portion of the basin, and then Fire Station 2 would be able to serve the area as well, just depending on which station has availability to get to an emergency quicker. The West Basin, total area in the urban growth boundary outside of the city, 773 acres, with a developable acreage of approximately 365, for about 47%. The future land use for the area, recreation, residential, a variety of different types and sizes, land conservation, and then mixed use as well. There is sewer, sewer infrastructure nearby, and the old Charlotte Pike Pump Station will remain and be used to service that area as well. As far as roads concerned, Mack Hatcher Parkway Connection was completed in 2022. We are already looking into the four-lane Mack Hatcher widening, but that is a state decision, so very likely will be a long-term project. The Del Rio Pike Improvement is long-term as well. And there is a high-volume local road concept in Connect Franklin, north of Mack Hatcher, running east and west, to potentially serve this area of the basin, should anything be developed there. And Fire Station 8, which is the West Haven Fire Station, can serve the area adequately. So that is the two basins we have designated as short-term. So moving into the midterm capabilities, we look here at the Maze Creek Basin, the total area in the urban growth boundary over 4,200, with 72% of that being deemed developable. Most of this area is predominantly development reserve, but there is, as of very recently, rural reserve designated on the Smith Properties, slated for a small commercial node, as well as just general residential in this area. Now sewer service, this area could be served with gravity sewer, but there is a significantly large investment that would be needed. Major density in this area as well will likely lead to the need for the south plant or a regional pump station. And Milcrofton has stated that there will be a new water tank for this area by 2025, but because it is outside of the city of Franklin's water district, that is really up to development and their work with Milcrofton. Road infrastructure, Murphysboro Road has been widened, Market Street and the McEwen Drive Extensions are near-term, Wilson Pike is midterm because it's up to the state, Arnold Road Improvement is long-term, Liberty Pike Extension is long-term, and a Clovercroft Road Improvement is needed. As far as emergency services, major development out here would cause a new station to be needed. Extended response times may necessitate a temporary station in the meantime, while funds and construction would occur on that new station, and Stations 6, 2, and potentially 7 would need to serve in the interim. As far as water supply, large setbacks and hydrant availability will all impact these and potentially supplement a tanker support for the water supply that's not currently in the fleet. So this is really a general statement that we received from emergency services of typically the things that they would need for more rural emergency services when there is not a station nearby. Also in midterm, the Spencer Creek Basin, as you can see, the vast majority of this basin is already within city limits, but it has been given midterm. So there is density and commercial to the east over in the Cool Springs area, recreation and residential to the south and the west. The South Prong Sewer Service improvements are planned, but we're currently also designing a low-pressure system for a few lots along Franklin Road that are within the city. There are many different Connect Franklin projects in the mid-to-long-term sections of Connect Franklin, and many of the intersections in this area are reaching failure. Again, existing Stations 3 and 4 could service the area, but there may be increased response times, there may be water supply issues with large setbacks that we see in the area, and we potentially may need to supplement any additional development with tanker support, which is not currently in the emergency services fleet. Southwest Basin 1, this previously was a long-term capability, but because of the reduction in the size of the urban growth boundary with the UGB update, and some additional development pressure and interest in the area, this has now been seen more in the midterm potential, with just under 1,500 acres within the urban growth boundary now, and roughly 37% of that being developable. A lot of this area is development reserve. There's likely going to be a variety of land uses with lower density to the south and land conservation as well because of the hillsides in the area. And we currently have an Envision Franklin Amendment submitted for the Harland property to be designated as Village Green. Now sewer service in this area, significant extension will be needed, pump station, Forest Main upgrades to existing lines. The nearest sewer is pretty much right in this area, just outside the basin. So we're looking at significant investment needed in order to get sewer services into major developments for Southwest 1. The lack of existing road network will also require significant extension and investments. Now additionally, originally, we thought that Mack Hatcher Parkway Extension would likely be the first domino in this area as it swoops right in through the center. However, we may be seeing that shift should the Harland property develop as they are interested. We may see some road widening and some finagling there, but still Mack Hatcher Parkway will likely be the major domino for this Southwest Basin. And emergency services will be handled by a combination of existing stations until they feel that the response times are too long and would necessitate a new station. So as I said, we'll skip through the long-term capabilities. Southwest Basin 2, 64% developable, predominantly right now it's just development, reserve, and land conservation, but rural character should be preserved in that area. Southwest Basin 3, 66% developable, currently development, reserve, a little bit of residential, and some land conservation. Again, that rural character should be preserved in that area. Southwest Basin 4, 45% developable. This currently has a large number of county subdivisions, and so gravity sewer in the area is, is pretty limited because they're already our existing subdivisions there, so. And then the Central Franklin Basin, we've just given not applicable because it's entirety within the city, and what's not in the city already has developed with county subdivisions. So it's just handled the way that it currently is handled, and we won't really probably be seeing any sort of annexation in there. So then we reach our last slide that you have the printout of. Again, this basin analysis is intentionally high-level. No cost estimates were provided, and any sort of ROI analysis or cost estimate would need a significant additional in-depth study, so.
I just kind of want to wrap up things just very briefly by saying thanks to Eric for compiling all this information and doing the updates. Really, the reason we wanted to bring this to you was so that you have this information, you're aware that it's in Envision Franklin. As annexation requests continue to come in, or even development plans for recently annexed areas, you're gonna really see the need for investment in infrastructure. I know that's something that we continually talk about as these development plans come in, and this is really to help guide some of your decisions and to help give you that background information on where the magnitude of investment is needed, and where we think that the investments may pay off in the short term versus midterm or long term. So we're happy to take any questions. I hope this information is helpful. I know it was a lot to consume, but thank you for letting us go through this.
My big takeaway immediately is thank you for putting the road infrastructure on there, connecting that to those sewer basins, because I think it's important that we have to think about those two things going in tandem moving forward, because they can't, we can't put roads over here and the sewer over there. So, great job.
The, it was fantastic. I'm gonna take you up on your offer for the ROI analysis, if the other board members would agree. Because while this is, this is great, it is excellent, because it does show us where we need to start thinking about investing. There's a significant number, but the, the numbers, you know, the road infrastructure and projects, we probably have most of the cost of a lot of this anyway, right? Where we can see that our road infrastructure probable costs are X, and leaving out I-65 interchange on Goose Creek, which was in the Goose Creek Study. And when you put that in there, it's gonna make a big difference on how we decide down there. The fire stations, I'm sure that we can estimate what the cost of these new fire stations are. But seeing the scale of these, the sewer impact, you know, what the possible, now again, I know you're gonna say that the cost change that depends on the development comes to us, the cost, but even just to have a frame, a point in timeframe of reference for us, I think I know how it will pan out, but I'm not really sure. I think that road infrastructure in Goose Creek is gonna be more expensive than sewer infrastructure in Maze, Maze Creek, in the Maze Creek Basin by a significant amount. But I don't know, I've never seen it side to side. And so I think this is great, but I think the next step will show kind of where the bundles of our, of them, because like the mayor, what the mayor said is right, but we gotta see the numbers of the road infrastructure projects, the cost of the sewer, and then I think we'll be, again, to be able to say, keep annexing down the south Goose Creek, guess what? A bunch of roads we're gonna have to build, so we might want to be, you know, that will usurp a possible cost of sewer to the west. I don't know what, how it pans out, but those are the kinds of things I'm thinking about. And I think others probably are too.
Very, very good observations, and this is what, as, as Emily and I said, and Eric, we don't want to trigger these thoughts. And the key is, though, as we look at the city sewer, as we look at the city road network and that investment, keep in mind somebody like Milcrofton that has to build tanks and infrastructure too, that they require developers to do that. And then you have electric and natural gas systems to be, be put in too. So it all plays in to the investment that perhaps we can. So it all plays in to the investment that perhaps we can couple with private development to move these particular basins forward that are, will, will have a return because we're going to have, together, we're going to have to make an investment, and that's really the complexity associated with it. And we do have some developments coming forward that will help us further this conversation.
Alderman Peterson.
First of all, let's remember Frank, the City of Franklin pays for roads. They do not pay for water and sewer. Please keep that in mind. Those are two totally different situations, completely different situations. But the city does pay all the money. I mean, well, you know, maybe get help from the developers, but I'm just saying, water and sewer is not a, what do you call it, a, a, a City of Franklin expense.
Okay, great discussion. Ready to move on? We'll go to solar ray expansion at 135 Claude Yates Drive, known as the Water Reclamation Facility.
Great. It's great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Alderman. I have Ron Mervel with us tonight as well as Mike Cassidy. Mike serves as the Chair of the Sustainability Commission. He's a resident of West Haven and a retired telecommunications executive. Ron's a professional engineer with about 40 years' experience, 40-plus, and he's the president and founder of Energy Source Partners. We've been working with them since 2011 is when our first contract was approved with Energy Source Partners, and we're looking at amending that contract from 2011. You can see on this map, the area outlined with the orange dots, that's the approximate area that we're evaluating. And the system that's there right now is a 200 KW system. It takes up a little more than a half acre of land. I'm going to go to the next map, and this shows the proposed layout for roughly 1.5 megawatts of solar. It does leave open the construction access drive that is there currently that's actually being used as staging for the Bicentennial Park Project. There's also a little parking area that you can kind of see at the top of the hill, and these are, been kind of well-established through the construction phase of the South Plant and we think could be advantageous to leave open, so sort of designing around that. And then also staying off the tree line and utilizing the area that we currently lease to Energy Source Partners. We are proposing a pollinator garden that would go in between the rows, between the tree line and the South Plant, so that area where the soil is a little better than where it's so rocky, the rest of the, rest of the area of the leased premise. But I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mervel to kind of talk through some of the, the details of the project.
Good evening, thank you. We've had a public-private partnership now for 12 and a half years, and some of you were on the board when we, we started, and it's been very successful. I sent Andrew a summary of what we had projected back in 2011, 2012, and we've met all those projections. It's done financially everything we said it would do, and it's generating power today, and it would continue for another seven and a half years under our existing 20-year contract, but we wish to upgrade that project now. The equipment is better after 12 and a half years. Like a lot of the electronics, it's, it's a lot better. What I would say to you is that we want to, as Andrew said, amend the existing contract to include a one and a half megawatt array, which is over seven times the size of the existing facility in terms of power. The solar panels themselves existing are about 220 watts. We'll be using 560 watt panels now, so they're much more powerful, not so much bigger. They've just gotten more efficient over time as, as the, as the technology has evolved. We'll rebuild it, that 200 at no cost to the city and extend it out for 20 years as part of this contract. And the, the, Mr. Mayor, you'll be happy to know that y'all are in the 80/20 driver's seat on that right now. We were 80/20 until we got our money back a few years ago, and now it's split, so y'all are getting the lion's share of that, and we'll continue. The commitment that we make to you is that we will use American-made products. We will, we will, we will pay Davis Bacon wage rates, both for ourselves. We'll make sure anyone that's a subcontractor to us would do the same thing. And suppliers who supply equipment to us will have to meet the Davis Bacon wage rates as well. All employees. The city currently expends, depending on the month, but an average of around $150,000 a month right now for power out there at that plant. And it's grown. When we first started out there, it was around $75,000 to $80,000 a month. So you, you've grown quite a bit in the last, and as I understand it, you're about 80% capacity right now. So there could be some more growth that we could capture later on if we decide to do that together, but right now we're trying to get 80%. We want to reduce that electric bill considerably. We also want to use battery storage as part of this, and these are not the lithium-ion batteries that you're used to with automobiles. These are the big flow batteries. A flow battery is a, a much bigger battery, and it's an aqueous solution, and it can go from 100%, we can draw it all the way down to zero charge and then recharge it. And it's, it's made by a defense contractor to the military, and it's a very safe product. And they developed this battery, quite frankly, out of the Afghanistan War. They're sending troops out, deploying them out, going after, going after who they were going after. And the Taliban soon realized that they didn't have to engage them. If they wanted to leave the territory, all they had to do was wait till their fuel sources ran out, and then they'd send in a, a truck or something, you know, and guess what, guess what, they would attack. They would attack those, and then when they ran out of fuel, they had to leave the territory. So they developed a battery system where they didn't have to take fuel with them on the tankers and that sort of thing, and these, these batteries are part of that effort. So the battery will be a flexible, long-duration energy storage application. They're 20 years design life, and we can, we can design them up to 12 hours so we can get through a nighttime. If we, if we want to go at night, solar during the day, or if we need extra firepower during the day, there are a lot of options that we have with these batteries. Remember, we're paying for everything. Y'all aren't having to provide anything on this, and we're erecting everything. You are providing the real estate, and thank you. I believe that on the, based on the projections that we've made and our existing system and it's, and what it's done, that we will, that city will make over $4,320 over the next 20 years doing this project for the, for the wastewater plant. And that's not considering any rate increases. Total, the, the total city savings, not Ron Mervel, but city will make, and y'all are making more money than I am out of this deal. I'm getting my money back.
Yeah, you said 4,000, it's a million.
Do you hear me? Is that better?
No, you said.
I meant 4,300, $20,000. So excuse me for that, I apologize. And you will, it'll, it'll break about the same way, Mr. Mayor. It'll break after about eight and a half years your way, based on the, on the rates that we're going to ask you to pay us for the, for the, for the power, which will be less than you're paying right now to Middleton Selecetrick. I have talked personally to Middleton Selecetrick. I believe that Andrew Orr has as well. They support this project. They're not, they're not fighting us about it. They're, you know, they would love it if we didn't do it, but they're not going to fight us, and they're going to support us. So I want you to know that. There's no hard feelings, and they're still going to come out in ice storms and climb your poles for you.
Got any questions for Andrew or Vice Mayor?
I just have an opinion on it, but, I mean, there are two fields there. There's a smaller field closer to the plant, and then there's another one, what'd you say, array? Thank you. Look at you. Array up in that field. What, I guess I'm, I'm curious, because the comment was made last time about, you know, having expansion abilities, whatever, why not go into that field where that larger array is versus down in this area? I mean, again, I, I'm sure there's a reason, yeah, but.
When the South Plant was expanded, they ran, correct me if I'm wrong, but they ran conduit to where you have the inverters today, to where you can tie into the plant. So they sort of teed it up for the, this array or a future array to connect directly into the plant. And then there's also a benefit to keeping the panels and the batteries close to the source that they're feeding just to eliminate losses.
Got you.
Everybody good?
Good.
All right, thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, next is 2025 calendar of Board of Mayor and Alderman, if you'd.
I have one question.
Sure.
I know we typically only have one meeting in July and December, but I noticed that October only had one BOMA meeting.
It's an election year.
Oh, thank you. Not for me.
Okay, we're going to get to an item that's been deferred many, many times, and I'll turn it over to Alderman Berger to talk about Board of Mayor and Alderman Pay.
Here we go. I'll be your great one. It's been 12 years. Oops, sorry. It's been 12 years, and I think this deserves taking a look at. We're talking about a fair, sustainable compensation increase for the board, including the mayor. I wrote this letter out so it'd be more succinct for y'all to take a look at. I'll just highlight a few points in here. It's been 12 years since we've looked at this. Population of the city is, between the, the last 12 years, it's increased at least 50%. The rolls are more demanding, the growth exponentially, the growth has, we all know what the growth has done. So we are serving, while, while we're all serving out of dedication to this community, obviously, the reality is that compensation that we receive has not kept pace with some of the needs, the inflation, the increased responsibility, the workload, the time commitment required for the aggressively growing city. So I talked about dramatic increase of workload, and I think you all could read that, how we've grown 100% over the last 20 years. Workloads increase far beyond that percentage. The amount of meetings we attend, things that we do, we spend significant time renewing detail, detailed agenda packages, town hall meetings, community events, countless things that we do, spending time with constituents. If you track your hours, you look at all this stuff, it's significant commitment, more serious time investment. I looked at my calendar the other day for the last couple of years, and I would encourage you to review your own calendars and look at that. But one of the things I'm looking at, not only the workload, the investment, but realize going forward, we've got to think outside the box and not think about ourselves so much. I mean, this won't even go into effect till next year at the end of November. And I think that we need to think about future boards. One of the things is, future boards, we realize that, that the workload, the, the time we put in, everything else for the future boards does, it does not decrease at all. At best, it stays the same, which we know that won't happen, and if growth continues, which we know it will, investments, the investment of time, sweat equity, everything else you put into this increases as well. Of the mayor's position, while it's labeled part-time, we know it's not part-time. We know that you spend a lot of your own money every month and then have to continuously try to put in your, your expenditures to the city for gas. I know this mayor, our mayor, goes all the time to Nashville and goes many places in our state for us, and his workload is really woefully, what he's paid and compensated for is woefully inadequate. Inflation, rising costs, we, we continue to remind ourselves that we look at our employees and our administrators here, Eric, what Eric was earning 15 years ago and what he's earning now, his compensation, of course, he is an employee. We have to take a look at all these things. So I would say that the rising costs, the inflation, things of that nature have to be considered. I know many of you dip into your own pocket. We do a lot of these things, and there's a lot of things that people on this board do that we don't even know about. We don't even know some of the things that we do, that we help and reach out to our constituents. And I will tell you, not only myself, but many of you I know are there when constituents have a spouse that dies, child in need, there's things that come up. That's part of the privilege, I think, of holding this office, is to do more than sit here and look at an agenda and vote. And I don't think there's one person on this board, and it's great, I'm so proud of that, that we are a part of a group that looks beyond that immensely. This board is great because we all, all of us have done that many, many times. So the case in point, you look at inflation, accumulated inflation over the last 10 years, look this up, not including 2024, has increased 28 to 30%. It's crazy. We have ensuring attractiveness for future candidates, and this is my main, main point. We need to think beyond the current positions and focus on sustainability of this board for future BOMA members and mayoral candidates. Mr. Mayor, we need to think about you and who precedes you. A fair and competitive compensation structure will help attract best candidates, individuals who are not only passionate but also capable of dedicating the time, the energy required to lead our cities, our city effectively. Serving on the Board of Mayor and Alderman should be accessible to people from all walks of life, not just those who can afford to supplement the role out of their own pockets many times, gas, babysitters, time away from their day jobs. We need more, I'm so glad that we have younger people who have stepped out and you've been able, and you're capable of doing that at this time in your life. There's some people out there that still cannot do that. So my, my suggestion is to increase from 1,000 to 2,000 for the Alderman and 2,000 to 4,000 for the mayor. Community support. I went out and talked, and we could do a formal if, if you want to do something like that, but I went out and talked to many, many people, and we're very fortunate that we have support for a compensation adjustment by many people in our community, not just the people that we know, just the everyday people that live in our neighborhoods. And I've talked to many of them outside my ward or in my ward, all over the city. I've made that a point the last month. And the citizens understand that there's, that as their needs and expectation grows, so have the demands of the time, the study, the attention placed on BOMA members as their elected representatives and their advocates. So they trust us to make decisions in the best interest of the city and compensating future Aldermen and future Mayors fairly in an investment in the continued success of our leadership. It's very important. So I would just urge you to look beyond our own situation today, consider the long-term health of this body. Fair compensation will allow us to continue, allow us to continue serving effectively to ensure that the future boards of mayor and Alderman are equipped with dedicated, capable members who are not only, who are not hindered by financial burdens in some way or shape or form, and I appreciate the consideration of this matter. And the purpose of my letter for you here was to show that compensation, show that the compensation raise is as, is a necessary adjustment to meet the growing demands. Number one, maintain fairness, ensure sustainability for future leadership, and also highlights the community support and the very practical reasons for the increase. That was my reason to bring to you. The other thing, and it disturbs, this disturbs me a little bit. People say, well, you know, it's going to be an election year. You know, I don't think that's a point anybody should ever consider. When you sit here and vote, when I sit here and vote on an item on our agenda. When you sit here and vote, when I sit here and vote on an item on our agenda, we should never, never cast a vote for any issue in regards to, well, will this, it's gonna be election year, or I'm in an election year. How's that gonna look? Will people vote for me? Will this be critical? Well, it's an election year. We hear that all the time. And I think that is so wrong to ever cast a vote with the mind of reelection in your, with reelection in your mind. People don't want us here, they don't have to vote us back on. So be it. I have a life, I'll go do something else. And I'm glad to do that. I'm not afraid to do that. And I don't think anybody on this board should be afraid to do that or be concerned about it. The people put us up here for a reason. We're here to represent them, we're here to advocate for them. And I think sometimes we have to advocate for ourselves, but not only ourselves, but for future boards and future people that want to be here. I always remember the fellow in my ward that said, I would love to run, but my wife's a nurse. She works night shifts, three nights a week or four nights a week. But she said, we need babysitters. I'm not afraid to do that. I could do these things. But they didn't think that cost-effectively it would be good for them to do that as a young family. But they were willing to give the time, and he worked from home. So he said, one, one day, maybe I will be in a position to do that. Well, I don't think that's fair. I don't think people should say they have to be in a position to do it. And I know everybody in this board, we give of our time, and we serve as public servants. And we don't do it for compensation. But there are things that we do to take a lot of time, take money out of our own pockets for things. And I think, again, we have to think of future boards. And Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you deserve to be paid more than $24,000 a year. It's embarrassing. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Berger.
I'd like to be, have that put on agenda to vote on it in two weeks, if that's okay. People need to think it over. Talk to your constituents, talk to people in town. I've not heard one person tell me that, no, you shouldn't do that. Not one. And I've talked to a ton of people all over the place. I ask you, you go out and talk to them. Thanks.
I've had to appreciate you bringing this up. It's always awkward, and I remember the last time we brought it up, I can't believe it was 12 years ago. Well, when we brought it up, and you did 12 years ago, my argument then is gonna be the same argument it is now. Personally, I appreciate that we actually get paid. I do believe it's public service. I appreciate the fact that we have the opportunity to purchase insurance from the city of Franklin. So I think that's wonderful. What I did advocate for then, and I will advocate for again now, I do think that the mayor role is woefully underpaid. I do believe that it is a full-time position. And I think, kudos to you, Ken, for making it such, in the way you've gotten involved in a myriad of different committees outside our own community. I do not think that it needs to be paid comparable to a corporate job in Franklin, Tennessee, because I think then we're gonna have people who do it for the money, not for the reason that they're wanting to serve. What do I think is is appropriate? I don't know. Last time I made it twice as much as what we make. I don't necessarily think that's appropriate. I think it should be more. But I do not think, again, that it should be where somebody looks at it as a job and not a calling. So I will lay that at your feet. The other thing that I will say, and I have brought this up to Eric in the past, and I don't really care one way or the other, but I do think that a great benefit for those of us who do choose to serve the public, and it's done this way on the county level, is that after so many terms, I don't know what that is, that you are able to continue with the city insurance until you get to Medicare or Medicaid. I'm not there yet. One of those things is coming. Oh, they did? Who did? Um, I believe they do. They do, Beth. I've had a discussion with leadership. Anyway, I think that would be something that would be a benefit for somebody serving multiple years. If you look at somebody like Dana McLendon, who spent 20 years on this board, and then, I mean, no offense, I'm glad you're here. Dana has, Dana and I are the same age. I think for his service, how great would it have been that he would continue to have that benefit as a thank you from the city? So those are things that I think that would be important to explore. I do understand, I mean, yeah, the $1,000 a month has been a wonderful, oh, I got a check today, I wasn't expecting that for however long. But to me, the insurance has been the bigger benefit. I do not necessarily disagree with a small bump, but I think the mayor role is what really needs to be addressed, because you are a unicorn, Ken Moore, that we have the opportunity to have a retired physician who has leadership skills and who has carried us for the last 12 years and not had to worry about making an income. So publicly, I thank you for that, but I know that you are not gonna be the case moving forward. So I gave you no really definitive opinions, other than a bunch of circular things, but I'm not worried about a pay raise for me as an Alderman. I think it's public service.
Alderman Baggett, I'm gonna ask you if it's okay if we defer your item until the, to another work session?
Absolutely. After that, happy to defer it. And, but it is an interesting item. I look forward to sharing. May I just give a little snippet of what this is so that maybe?
Send it to my subcommittee.
Yeah, your subcommittee. But here's why I want to.
We'll take care of it.
Mayor, I want to say this because I want the board to be thinking about this over the next few weeks, is the the City Hall commercial space, brought up with Eric, a possibility of incentivizing locally-owned businesses to to operate and occupy and working with a public-private through the Chamber or through Downtown Franklin Association. So be thinking about that, and get your juices flowing on that. I think we have an opportunity to use this public space in the City Hall to help the downtown Main Street and support local businesses. So that's what that's about. Thank you.
Alderman Potts, you're the closing comment.
All right. I appreciate that, sir. I actually wanted to go back to the previous topic, Agenda Item 11. And I know that Christine here moved to the table, so maybe this can be brought to us in the future, is just like we're going through with police and fire, and we've asked for annual review of pay to make sure that we're covering cost of living. I feel like this is also a, an opportunity here where maybe this is an automated, just like all employees within the city, that this is a review that should be done for. And and again, I've never really looked at my pay because I, I, just like Bev said, it's, I use it all over the city, driving around, going to, you know, whatever we need to be doing. But that cost of living, if if that's not already done, I'd like to make sure that that's reviewed.
But also, these, you know, that we have the thing where the city put out what other cities in Tennessee are paying.
Yeah, and I would not, and I, and I would like to know how many cities are growing rapidly like we are, expecting all the things that we do on this board for their other. And the other thing is about this pay, you know, it's certainly not a living wage, and in this community would never be. So I don't think we have to worry about that, about other people thinking that they'll do this for a living. Not in this community, not at that. Good luck.
Okay, we're finished.
I'll get more in Social Security than that one.
See you in about 10 minutes.